Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, January 3, 2023. The time is now 7:02. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 8, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have minutes for December 6, 2022.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
We have the need to go into executive session, so I hope you all indulge us for a couple of minutes. Madam Clerk.
Do you need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex State and New Jersey desires to proceed to closed executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss personnel. Be further resolved that at a time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Time is 7:05.
Madam Clerk. We're back on the record. Let's move to public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person should limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? They can't, they can't talk. Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. When the public hearing comes up, Mr. Kozinski.
Nothing for me.
Just, I wish everyone a happy and healthy new year, and let's all keep moving forward together.
Likewise, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year. I also am pleased to announce that through our sign out in front of the Health Department, we were able to get $55,000 in grant money reimbursed. So we got, that's a big win for the town, getting that $55,000 in found money. And at the end of the month, there will be a blood drive in honor of Keith Jarrett, so be on the lookout for more information regarding that.
Fisher. I too would like to wish everybody a happy new year, a healthy one. Ordinance number three, five, oh, six, an ordinance to fix salaries of certain officers, employees attached to Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January first, two, twenty, twenty-three. Open up the public hearing. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, oh, six? Seeing none, move to close?
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I move the ordinance?
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Ordinance number three, five, oh, seven, Commissioner Petracca?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a change if Council wants them. Yes, just to correct one minor clerical error, under fifty-seven, four, officers enumerated, under one, number two, deputy chief will be remaining there and taken out of part B. So that's just one correction of a minor clerical error. Thank you. This is ordinance three, five, zero, seven, an ordinance to amend and revise chapter fifty-seven, the fire department of the Township of Nutley. Whereas the governing body of the township of Nutley believes it is in the best interest of township to amend and revise chapter fifty-seven of the Township Code. Be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Vesta, New Jersey as follows. Section fifty-seven, four of the Township Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Officers enumerated is hereby amended to read as follow. The officers of the Fire Department shall consist of one chief, one deputy chief, four captains, five lieutenants, three assistant chiefs, one secretary, one police and fire signal system superintendent. The Director of Public Safety shall have the discretion to designate and appoint up to additional, up to two additional captains and lieutenants. Section, section two, fifty-seven, five of the Township Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Chief of Department is hereby amended to read as follows. Chief of the Fire Department, the Chief of the Fire Department shall be a full-time member of the Nutley Township Fire Department, shall be appointed by the Director of Public Safety. He, she shall sole and entire control over the Fire Department and shall report directly to the Director of Public Safety. Section fifty-seven, there, seven, Township Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Assistant Chiefs is hereby amended to read as follows. The Assistant Chief shall be volunteer firefighters who shall serve as active volunteer firefighters for the last three, at least three years. One from each volunteer company shall be appointed by the Director of Public Safety for a term of two years. Section four, ordinance of the Township of Nutley, which is, are inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to extend of such inconsistencies. If, section five, if any section, subsection, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance. Section six, all of other provisions of fifty-seven, the code with Township of Nutley are not further amended and remain in full and full force and effect. This ordinance shall take effect twenty days after final passage in accordance with the law. I move to open.
Tom Peters, I'm a volunteer fireman.
Mr. Peters, could you just give your address, please?
Sixty-three Kensal Avenue, Nutley. I've been a volunteer for fifty-six years, a career firefighter in Newark for twenty-seven and a half. I look at this, the fire department here, I figured it, I've been at the department more longer than any of them been living. I want to congratulate Paul. He's, I know he's qualified, and, and I guess it's, it's time, you know, it just came on very quick and caught a lot of people off guard, you know, that it was. A lot of people are wondering whether this was all because of the past chief and the way that ended, I guess. But, uh, questions now, I guess the, you got the ace up your sleeve with the deputy chief, because I think the Department of Personnel is gonna tell you need one. From the dealings I had in Newark and stuff, when we were acting at a rank, and the Department of Personnel came in and said that you couldn't skip a rank. And so from a captain to a chief, there's a deputy chief in between. And, and I think now you have five captains now, right?
Right.
Right? So that, right off the bat, we went from four to five. But what, I want to know, what, what effect is this gonna have on our taxes? You know, I'm, I'm talking to people that, that their taxes, using Commissioner Evans' formula, there's people that had their taxes go up over two thousand dollars. That's, that's a big hit, Al. That's a big, unlucky. I only got eight hundred. But there's people that got up over two thousand dollars using the, the Commissioner's formula. And now with, with the, the change in the department, and maybe having to put a deputy chief on, who's gonna make more than a captain. And, and then the, another question for you is, the ambulance money, is that yours, or is it the town?
That money goes back to the general fund.
It goes, it goes to, to Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Okay. Just wonder, because that, that, that's a lot of money, you know, what, what the, what the charge is. And, and the other thing on, on your, what you were saying before, and the police would hit pedestrians?
Yes.
I think we should outlaw pedestrians walking with their telephones. I've, I've almost hit a couple of people. They walk right off the curb. They don't look, not, they don't pick their head up. They're, they're stuck in that telephone.
But that's all, you know, is, is, I, I don't want to see an adverse effect on our taxes. Right.
And, and I don't want to see the volunteers gone. Now, when is those two going back to High Street?
That is, they've been relocated to the ambulance squad right now.
Yep.
So.
You know, we, we were told it was gonna be a couple of months. It's over a year.
Yes.
And, and response, our response is down. We don't have anybody who lives on that side of town. And when I was chief, the ISO came in and actually told us that we had to put another firehouse on the west side of town. And, I mean, we've had nothing on west side of town for over a year now.
Right. Well, I don't, first of all, Tom, I would like to thank you for your service all these years and all the volunteers as well. And this is not an easy decision, and I really respect you for coming up here, excuse me, for coming up here and being a gentleman. As far as the revow, I know that some people's taxes have gone up, and I believe some people's taxes will go down as well. So this isn't any way, shape, or form that I want to add more positions and extraordinary times, like you said, you know, we're in extraordinary times. It is two thousand twenty-three. I appreciate you congratulating Paul Cuffon, and I think, you know, it's a work in progress, and we're, we're gonna move forward. And, and it's definitely not a knock against any volunteers, and absolutely nothing's gonna change for the volunteers. And I embrace them, I always have, and I want to see them, you know, continue to strive. Obviously, the numbers are down in Nutley, like they are all over the country. You know, it's not nineteen seventy anymore where daddy goes to work and mommy's home and everybody has the flexibility. But, you know, my job up here as an elected official, and sometimes it, it's, it's not too popular. Is to really do the right thing by the residents and protect the residents, and that's what I'm doing tonight. I'm funding residents in front of everything, because I think that we have a duty to do that.
Yeah. Another thing that, that bugs the hell out of me is, a lot of these guys over here were volunteers. And I have no respect for any of you that were volunteers that forgot, that forgot you were volunteers. You treat the volunteers like shit. And, and, you know, that ticks me off. They forgot where they came from, and I have no respect for anybody. I don't care who you are, anything, that forgets where you came. And, and it's been a, it's been a thorn in my side. And there's, you know, and most of them got on because they had their volunteer status. So that's, that's my thing, Al.
Tom, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on ordinance number three, five, oh, seven?
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Charles Kozinski, twenty-one Ravine Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. According to the January twenty-twenty-two National Fire Association, the majority of fire departments in the United States are volunteers. Of the total twenty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-five fire departments in the country, nineteen thousand, one-hundred-and-twelve are all volunteer. Approximately five thousand are mostly volunteer. Two thousand are mostly career, and three thousand are all career. In Nutley, we are among the seventy-five-hundred departments in the country that are both volunteer and career firefighters. But the ratio of volunteer to career firefighters is shifting, as we noted. In nineteen ninety, some of you can remember back to nineteen ninety, I'm sure, I'm not sure Mr. Kelly can, or quite a few of the guys here. But in nineteen ninety, Nutley had more than seventy-five volunteers, as compared to thirty-five career firefighters at that time. A volunteer chief headed the entire department. But Commissioner Carmen Orecio was already questioning as to whether the chief position shouldn't come from within the ranks of the career firefighters. To spur that vision, Carmen persuaded civil service to create the position of executive officer to handle the day-to-day activities, administrative responsibilities of the Nutley Career Fire Department. I served that career firefighters in that role from nineteen ninety until my retirement in ninety-seven, and I consider myself extremely fortunate to have done that. I worked with some of the best volunteers and paid firemen in the country, as far as I'm concerned. Today, the number of volunteers within Nutley's firefighting department is less than fifteen, while the career department is at forty-one. In twenty-twenty-two, they responded to five thousand, one-hundred-and-four calls. That means they left that firehouse five thousand, one-hundred-and-four times to protect our citizens in Nutley. And inordinate a number of calls for the town of the size of Nutley. Arguably, given the huge increase in calls and the changes to the ratio of volunteers to career firefighters, the position of chief needs to come from the ranks of the career firefighters. Although it's taken thirty-two years for Nutley to bring this fire department to this auspicious moment, it remains the right thing to do, in my opinion. I am more than happy that I am here to witness what I hope would be the approval of this ordinance. Kudos to Commissioner Al Petracca and the other Commissioners for following through on a long-lost vision. And congratulations to the Nutley Commissioners for recognizing the benefits of this change to the Fire Department and all of Nutley's residents. May I be the first to congratulate the new chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Mr. Kozinski.
Anybody else like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, oh, seven? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance?
Close.
Second? I'm sorry, close the public hearing?
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move it.
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas New Jersey statute fifty-four, calling forth, three dot, three, zero, provides that war veterans who are honorably discharged from active service in a time of war and in any branch of armed services in the United States who have been or shall be declared the United States Veterans Administration, by, by the United States Veterans Administration to be one-hundred percent totally and permanently disabled in connection with their wartime service are entitled to a full tax exemption of their dwelling and the lot in which it is situated. Whereas the following taxpayer has made such application and is eligible for the full exemption. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County, Vesta, State of New Jersey, that Stephen, a plumber, be granted full exemption of the payment of property taxes from December one, twenty-twenty-two, and all subsequent years thereafter on the property identified as block seventy-five, hundred, lot eighteen, also known as twenty-five Ravine Avenue. Be further resolved, the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty cents for twenty-twenty-two property taxes. So move.
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you for your service. Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution fixes the interest rate on late property tax payments. It, uh, what's important about this is that the minimum amount that we're allowed by statute, the charge is eight percent, whereas the maximum is eighteen percent. Uh, we, Nutley have always, uh, had held it to the minimum charge. So now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County, Vesta, State of New Jersey, that one, the tax collector is hereby authorized and directed to charge eight percent per annum on all taxes becoming delinquent after the due date, subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of taxes provided by law, effective January one, twenty-twenty-three. Quarterly payments made by cash, check, or money order shall have a ten-day grace period. Any payments not made in accordance with section two of this resolution shall be charged interest from the due date as set forth in section one. So move.
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Where the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions on NJSA nineteen forty-four, eight, twenty point five. And whereas the Township of Nutley, through the Department of Public Safety, has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for site investigations for an above-ground storage tank behind Public Safety Building at two-twenty-eight Chestnut Street. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for four to six weeks from the date of contract award. And submitted proposal indicating they will provide such services for the sum not to exceed thirty-five thousand, whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year. And that the contract will prohibit Veridian Environmental Consultants from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available from account G dash, zero, four, dash, one, seven, two, dash, four, zero, one. An amount of thirty-five thousand have been certified by the Chief Financial Officers, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Vesta, State of New Jersey. Enter into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants as described hereon. Be further resolved that the business disclosure and entity certification and determination of value be placed on file at this, with this resolution. Be further resolved that the notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley sun in accordance with the local public contract law. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Vesta, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of R S forty-eight, four, dash, fifty-eight, the following transfers are provisioned in two thousand twenty-two budget B, and the same are hereby authorized and approved. Police salary and wage, twenty thousand to gasoline, twenty thousand, police salary and wage, twenty thousand, police equipment, and other fire and salary. Um, fire and salary, two hundred and thousand to gasoline for twenty thousand. I move it. Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
So I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Where sealed bids are received for recreation uniforms, equipment, and supplies on November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two in the Township of Nutley. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley and the County of Vesta, State of New Jersey, that a contract for recreation uniforms, equipment, and supplies be awarded to B S N Sports, P O Box forty-nine, Jenkentown, P A. As for the attached sheet, not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred. Whereas funds are available from accounts three, dash, zero, one, five, zero, six, two hundred, and T dash, twenty-four, nine, zero, nine, nine, zero, one, through nine, fifteen, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the Township Clerk be, and they are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley and the County of Vesta and State of New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Where sealed bids are received for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration service and purchase on November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two in the Township of Nutley. And whereas Advanced Mechanical Corp., nine Folsom Court, Passaic, New Jersey, was a low bidder at a service rate per hour of eighty dollars in materials with a five percent markup. And whereas the contract is not to exceed one hundred thousand and and funds are available from account three, dash, zero, one, five, zero, eight, two hundred, in the amount of thirty thousand, and capital ordinance thirty-four, seventy-nine, A, in the amount of seventy thousand for services contingent upon the adoption of the twenty twenty-three budget, with an option to extend for one year, and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, that a contract for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, refrigeration service, and purchase be awarded to Advanced Mechanical Corp. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patrako.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. So I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization, Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, license number sixty-three, twenty-two, up premise fifty-fifty cash raffle to be held Saturday, April eighth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is hereby approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patrako.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
This resolution is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. It authorizes the mayor and a township clerk to execute and attest respectfully a certificate of completion and compliance for block three hundred lots, one, dash, one, dot, oh, five, one, dot, oh, six, one, eleven ideation wave phase three of the phase two, A redevelopment project. I move resolution, uh, number zero, three, dash, twenty-three, as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patrako.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, there's a, we have a need to go into executive session to discuss, Mr. Bruno?
Personnel and contract negotiations.
And property acquisition. Motion.
Move it.
Second.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two, thirty-one, excuse me, public law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Vessick, State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations, personnel, and property acquisition. Be further resolved that at a time when such discussions may be made, may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley. Pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patrako.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
That concludes, uh, there are, we're not going to have any other, just one second.
I'm sorry, we're, we're not done yet. We're not done yet. Could you hold on one minute?
One second, please.
We're not done yet.
There's going to be no further action. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patrako, Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
The time is now seven fifty-five.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief Capone.